Executive session, there will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:04 PM. It is Monday, October the 2nd, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
Heiser.
Here.
Floreskill.
Here.
Zuniga.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor likes to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for the city's council special meeting for September 19th and the city council regular meeting minutes for the same day, September 19th, 2023.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. First up is Ms. Evangelina Chapa.
Mayor, council members, staff, I would like to talk about the agenda item number 30 from September the 19th, 2023 council meetings that was on item 30. There were a lot of exclamation marks and questions that were unclear at the moment. How about that? The next one is...
Yeah, that's what I was just about to say. I don't think the mic is on.
Got it?
There you go.
Mayor, council members and staff, I would like to speak about, I'm Evangelina Chapa. I want to talk about agenda item number 30 on the September 19, 23 council meeting. There were a lot of exclamation marks and question marks that were left unclear at the end of the meeting. Even P and Z commissioners were confused at their meeting. One of the commissioners asked P and Z Director Atkins, what's, what is, what is the situation with the developer? He said, "The developer is still dotting its i's and crossing the t's." Well, at the state of the city, Mayor, you praised a lot of several, about several developments in this project, which is the Caraway project on item 30, was one of the businesses that you praised. And so I wonder, is there a third version for, to explain to the residents for us to understand what was happening? Because on that day, there were a lot of businesses, there were a lot of staff, there were not a lot of voters, but you gave a lot of praise to the, to this project. And so I think that we were kind of left hanging on, at the end of that question or item, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
All right, next up is Mr. Robert Ferguson.
Distinguished members of council, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and all in authority in the city and the citizens, it has come to my attention recently that the city is seeking advice on what to do with a community center in the future. However, it has also come to my attention that the methodology used is only going to be by internet or, or, you know, polling by that method. There's a considerable number in our community that do not have internet capability and do not work with, say, originally, Mr., the previous mayor told me that the city, when they put together the entire charter for the city, sent a copy out to every member of the community at that time. For those members of our community that are not internet savvy or involved with it, I would suggest that the council consider directing the communication department to do a similar item for items coming up of major import. One would be like the community center, trying to determine what we want in that center. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I have one more registered, is Mr. Miller, but I believe he is going to like to speak on agenda item 19. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close. He shook his head. I'm going to close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up is agenda item number three, agenda order. Does anybody have any suggestions or requests to move items? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to report some presentations. First up is National Night Out proclamation. Councilor Heiser.
Thank you, Mayor, for the seamless transition here. For those of you who don't know, National Night Out is tomorrow. There are, I believe, seven neighborhoods throughout the city that are hosting events for National Night Out. So if it's, if you do have the ability to go out, it would be fantastic to see everybody. I know a couple people from up here are going to be there, so happy to chat with anyone and everyone who wants to, to come, have a good time with the police department and your neighbors. So the city of Kyle, National Night Out Association of Town Watch are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October 3rd, 2023, deemed National Night Out. And whereas the 40th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Kyle to join forces with thousands of other communities across the county in promoting cooperative community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the Kyle Police Department threw joint crime and violence prevention efforts in Kyle and supports National Night Out 2023 and locally, whereas it is essential that all citizens of Kyle be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have in reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Kyle. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness programs, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, we, the city council of Kyle, Hayes County, Texas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, as National Night Out.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Anybody have any comments? All right, next up is agenda item number five, Haze Free Press Anniversary Proclamation. Councilor Floreskill.
Do we have folks here for a picture? All right.
Anybody else in the audience?
I know what I always do. I was going to get out of the picture.
Not today.
Y'all got to scooch in.
Yeah, everybody, come on in. All right, everyone ready? One, two, and three. Perfect. Thank y'all.
Mayor, council, and everybody here, my name is Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. I thought I would just add a few, a couple of sentences here about what to expect tomorrow night. Good news, Councilmember Heiser, we have, we've upped it from seven to 11 now. We've had some new parties added. So yeah, so we got more communities that want to celebrate National Night Out. If you're not sure what that is, it's a chance for you to get to meet your neighbors so that everybody can look out for one another, knowing your neighbors helps reduce crime. And then in addition to that, while you're having your neighborhood block party or ice cream social, you will have visits from the mayor and council, from elect, from city officials, police department, fire department, EMS. All these emergency responders will come out to your block party and say hello and show off the fire trucks and police cars and such, so that you can get a chance to meet your first responders. If you don't know where your block party is, your first place to go is to check with your HOA, see if your HOA is participating in a block party within your community. If you don't have a block party in your particular neighborhood or not sure where to go, we always have one downtown, also on the square. So feel free to come downtown and we have groups from all over the community that'll be there, and we have a really good big block party down in the middle of town, too. So, thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you, Chief. And as, as an aside, just FYI, we are having some technical difficulties. We had a power outage over the weekend, and so our live stream capabilities are down, which means that the council meeting is not being streamed, are able to be consumed online. But IT has said that they are recording it, and the moment the meeting is over, it will be uploaded to all of our sites. And so you won't get to watch it live, but you'll be able to watch it starting as soon as it's over. All right, next up is agenda item number five, Haze Free Press Anniversary Proclamation. Councilor Floreskill.
All right, thank you. So we were, council was reached out to by the Haze Free Press, and they gave us the opportunity to read their proclamation. For anybody that doesn't know, the Haze Free Press is a local newspaper here, and it serves haze in general. So Kyle, Buta, I think, tripping, all around. Okay, so I'm going to start. Whereas the city of Kyle is proud to pay tribute to the Haze Free Press for its 120th anniversary celebration in 2023. And whereas the Haze Free Press, which has deep roots in Kyle, Buta, and Hayes County, was founded in 1903 by the Harwell family of Kyle and continues to be a family newspaper and family business. And whereas the Haze Free Press is locally owned and operated by Ashley Cutner and is a vital partner in the communities it serves, contributing news about art, education, health, wellness, sports, the environment, government issues, and retail development. And whereas the Haze Free Press is privileged to tell these stories and appreciates the continued support from the communities it serves. And whereas the Haze Free Press will celebrate its 120th anniversary with a year-end then and now series, highlighting the historic moments in the lives and times of people in the area and around the world. And whereas the Haze Free Press is an award-winning weekly newspaper serving Kyle, Buta, and Hayes County, and is the only newspaper for local news and advertising in the area, with an emphasis on stories about people in the community. Now therefore, I, Yvonne Floreskill, councilmember for the city of Kyle, hereby congratulate the Haze Free Press on its 120th anniversary and recognize its contributions to our community by presenting this proclamation as acknowledgement for our sincere appreciation for its continued commitment to inform and educate the people of Kyle and Hayes County. So I just, I, they're here, if you guys want to get up and say something, tell us who you are, and just a little bit of background, I know the Haze Free Press has changed hands a couple times. So if you could just tell us whenever you guys acquired it, whatever information background you want to give.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ashley Cutner. I am owner and publisher of the Haze Free Press, and we purchased the paper, my two partners and I, last year in January of 2022, and I became publisher in April. So we purchased it from the Barton family, which I'm sure everybody has heard of. I don't have to talk about that too much, but we are a family-owned newspaper. We have multiple, we have a newspaper in Port Lebaka and here, and we are just excited to be celebrating 120 years. That's, there's not a lot of newspapers that can say that even in this area. So thank you guys for recognizing us tonight, and we look forward to continuing to serve
Next up is agenda item number six, Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Councilor Heiser and Councilwoman Parsley.
you guys with the news of the area.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Can we take a picture?
Yeah.
So domestic violence is widespread but often flies under the radar.
Okay.
More importantly, it's a crime that isn't limited to any specific racial, ethnic, socioeconomic group, or gender. This type of violence can include intimate partner violence, violence, child abuse, elder abuse, as well as other types of violence between people who have relationships with each other. Understanding how to further bring awareness to this problem and finding ways to support victims and survivors of domestic abuse are the main goals of the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So I believe most of us, if not all of us, have visited the Hayes Cowell Women's Center, and it was really shocking when we went to. You know, initially, I thought that the only people who get help in there were females, and, and we learned that that was not the case. It was shocking to see how big the numbers are of the citizens of Kyle who get help from them. And it's really saddened for all of us to know that domestic violence does happen more often than we want, and, and is really not something that people most of the time talk about. So that being said, we're doing a proclamation, whereas the crime of domestic violence violates the basic human rights of safety and dignity, and 204 Texans were killed in an intimate partner homicide, including 169 women and 35 men. And whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group of people, but cut across all economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers. And whereas the impact of domestic violence and teen dating violence directly affect individuals and communities when society ignores or tolerates violence in relationships. And whereas last year, the Hayes Cowell Women's Center provided face-to-face services to over 978 local victims of domestic violence and provided 8,093 days of shelter. And whereas the last year, Hayes Cowell Women's Center provided these direct services to 157 victims from the city of Kyle. Now therefore, we, Daniela Parsley and Ben Heiser, by virtue of the authority vested in us as councilmembers of Kyle, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon the people of Kyle to work together with the Hayes Cowell Women's Center and local partners to bring an end to domestic violence. So we have a member of the Hayes Cowell Women's Center, I don't know if you want to, if you have something to say?
Hello, I'm Danielle Dolan, I'm the legal advocate for the Hayes Cowell Women's Center, and as Councilmember Daniela said...
Thank you. As Councilmember Daniela said, we did provide, we did serve 978 victims of domestic violence with 157 coming from Kyle, but that's just domestic violence, okay? Don't forget, so sexual assault victims are counted separately, so you will see Kyle victims in there, too, and child abuse victims are also separate. So this is just domestic violence. So, yeah. And that's just reported, you know, the people that come to us, because a lot of people don't, for various reasons. So we can't do it without the community's support, and we are grateful for y'all's support, and definitely all, everyone in our communities that we serve here in Hayes and Cowell Counties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Floreskill.
I just want to say thank you for your services. The Women's Shelter is an amazing place. It, it gives a lot back to the community, and being able to tour it and walk it and to get a feel of what it is that you guys do was really meaningful. And so I want to say thank you to you, and there's a ton of people that I met out there. They're just great people. And so thank you for everything that you guys do as well.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have fundraisers throughout the year. We have one coming up for Cowell County, actually, but that one is sold out. But hopefully y'all can participate, or, you know, anyone is welcome to come next year at the one in San Marcos that benefiting Hayes County.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you guys for all that you do. It really was an important day when Danielle and I went out and saw the facility and just learned as to, you know, how many people from Kyle are affected by domestic violence and how much of an impact you all have in, in the response and assisting our police department in handling some of those matters. And I look forward to continuing our relationship in 2024.
Thank you. We do work with the police departments. I know that I've worked with Kyle PD, and they've been really, really wonderful, super helpful, and San Marcos PD, too. Actually, he's a Cowell County Sheriff's also. I haven't worked with everybody, but, but yes, the ones that I have have been super wonderful to us.
That's good, thank you.
Anyone else? Y'all want to do a photo? All right. Okay, next up is agenda item number seven, presentation of graduates of the 2023 Team Kyle Academy. Mr. Hendricks.
Mayor, Council, for the record, Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager. I'd like to say a few things about this program before we bring the graduates up. You know, as residents in the city, we all get up in the morning, we turn on a light, go about our business in the restroom, we might turn on the stove, which is either electricity or natural gas. We get in a car, and we drive down a road to a business, either in our city or another city, hopefully our city. We go to lunch somewhere, we come home from work and turn the lights on, and we get in a house, hopefully the garage door open or works the way it's supposed to. And again, we wrote, we drove on a road, and if everything, if we're doing our job right, then the people doing all those activities don't really think about how that road got there, or how the electricity got to their house, or even how the, that there's a government that runs and makes all those things happen. Some people, however, do ask those questions, and those people are here tonight, and, and to those people, I'd like to present to you the graduating class of the 2003 version of the Team Kyle Academy. Rachel.
All right, Rachel Sonier, Communications Director. I am very happy to present our 2023 class of Team Kyle Academy. They were an awesome group of individuals. We have a total of 15 graduates for tonight's class. These graduates all went through six weeks of courses, covering everything from founders in history to city organization, capital improvements, projects, building, inspection, all of it. They even lifted, or learned how to use excavators with Public Works. Some of them might be able to be hired by Public Works, I think, in the future. So keep an eye out there, y'all. But they also ran an emergency simulation where they were instant command and PIO and learned a whole lot about emergency communications and everything that goes into that. So I'm very happy to present all of our graduates for tonight, and I'm going to have y'all, whenever I announce your name, if you'll come up, and our wonderful Assistant City Manager will give you your certificate, and then if you'll stay up there, I would like to get a group picture with all of my TKA graduates. All right, so our very first graduate for tonight is Michelle Martinez. If you're in the building, Michelle, can you come to the front? Next up, Lisa Ayala. Lisa? Grace was our instant command during the emergency operations. She did great. Sorry, we might have to do some stack draws, y'all are a lot. Mary Grace Reyes. And that's our list of our Team Kyle Academy class of 2023. Thank y'all all so much. Y'all were an awesome class to have, and I'm going to have Xander come up and get a full group photo with y'all. I might have to have y'all do, do two rows, maybe.
We've been together for like eight weeks, get in.
We like each other, we like each other. And then, and then I want to get one with council as well.
Absolutely.
And then I'm going to have you come up next.
All right, everyone ready? One, two, and three. Hope we got another.
All right.
All right. One, two, and three. Perfect, thank y'all. Can we get one with council as well?
Councilmembers, would you like to get in there? All right, perfect, thank you.
Perfect. One, two, and three. Awesome. Thank y'all so much.
There is also cake in the lobby, if anyone would like to go have a slice of cake. Thank y'all, guys.
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Next up is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda, or wish to remove any of the items? Councilor Floreskill.
I would like to pull agenda item 13.
Any other items? Motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda items eight through 12.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember...
All right, motion by Councilor Floris Cale, seconded by Councilor Tobias, that we approve Agenda Items 8 through 12. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item 13, approved resolution for an ILA between the City of Kyle and San Marcos for water sharing agreement. Uh, this item's got Mr. Sanford's name on it. Councilor Floris Cale.
All right, thank you very much. Um, first and foremost, what I want to say as a council member to the City of San Marcos and to the council of San Marcos is thank you. Um, we, this is the second year that we have requested, um, the city to lend us their water rights, and so, um, I'm more than appreciative to them and to their council for allowing that. So, just after doing some research, um, we are Region L, according to, uh, what is this, South Central Texas Regional Water Plan? Um, and I just, I, I have some concerns, and I just want to make sure that the city is gonna have a solid plan. So the City of San Marcos also is a emergency provider to two other cities, or two other water, um, providers, which is Crystal Clear, WSC, and Texas State University. But I also found out that the City of Kyle is an emergency provider for County Line SUD. Is that correct?
Tim Sanford, for the record, good evening, council and mayor. Uh, we do not have an emergency connection for, with County Line, currently.
All right, I read, I got this off of, um, the Texas Comptroller had a really great report, and in that report, I had a link and it had all this information to it. And it states that the City of Kyle is the emergency provider and the emergency user is County Line SUD.
Okay.
So if that's not, I mean, and it's from 2021, so that could have changed. Um, my concern being, do we, what does that plan look like in the event that they have to borrow water from us?
So we have had conversations with County Line for an interconnect, but one has not been established. So there have been those conversations, and maybe that's where that came from, but they have not been established. There's been some modeling and things that we've looked into that have not come to completion. So I, I really can't speak to our abilities to supply them with water, because that's still being looked at and engineered with consultants.
Okay, well, that's an even bigger concern. I mean, if we're not, I think that needs to be removed from this information.
Sure, and can you repeat where that was at?
Yeah, I can, in fact, I can just, um, forward it to you. It was a TML link, and then that had a report from the Texas Comptroller, and it's a really great informative, um, report that talks about not just the City of Kyle, but like all of Texas and the drought and how it's gonna be affected.
Sure.
Um, and so in that link, there was another link, and it took me to, uh, Region L, which is, they said it was Central Texas. Um, and then it's, it's a lot of pages, I think it's like 498 pages. But I have the specific page numbers I can give to you, that state, who is a emergency provider and who the emergency user is. So now I'm just genuinely confused as to how it got this information on there. Um, it also stated that, um, it looks like we did a, a report that we provided, um, it's most recent report year for the City of Kyle was 2017. Our population at the time was 27,468. Um, and then it talks about the total cost of loss and the water loss and the, I think it's a water loss report. I'm not completely sure. I, I just found this on, like, along with all the other information, and so, um, it was all new to me. And this, I just looked up all this information. I received the email, or we received the email collectively as council probably four weeks ago. Um, and so all this is relatively new. I know the Comptroller's report, reports information adds up to August 29th, 2023. And so, um, again, I think maybe if we can update this or figure out why it says that we are an emergency provider, uh, that would cause me less stress.
Sure, no, definitely, I would, I would want to get that fixed too, and I'll, I'll look into it and make sure, actually, I know some board members with Region L, so I'll, I'll make sure that's addressed, so. I don't know why they're speaking to that, and so.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, you bet. Uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Floris Cale, seconded by Councilor Zuniga, that we approve Agenda Item 13. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item 14, approved resolution authorizing award and execution of a construction agreement with Atlas Construction Corporation, Granite Shores, Texas, best value and lowest bidder in an amount not to exceed 1.605,925 million dollars, which includes a 5% contingency to perform all work. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Leon Barba, City Engineer. When we were working our CIP budget, uh, we estimated about 1.8 million dollars for this project. It is a 16-inch water line, and, uh, will be placed in, in the new FM 110 right away. I know there's been some confusion on FM 110. It's a section of FM 110 that is south, also known as Yarrington, if, by the Yarrington Concrete Company. What surprised me was that we got 19 bids. Uh, I don't think I've ever gotten that many bids on a project before, uh, so I was very surprised with that. Oops. And, uh, anyway, they ranged from one and a half million up to almost $3 million. Uh, Atlas Construction was the lowest bidder. Eventually, this line will be looped into the Waterstone develop, development, and then tied to the County Road Elevated Storage that we have there, that we're planning to build hopefully soon. The, um, uh, estimated completion is mid-year of 2024. And if you see that blue, light blue line, that's the limits of the project's about 4,600 feet, starts at, uh, our Yarrington well site, right there by the concrete plant, and continues in a southeasterly direction about 4,600 feet. It stops at the Waterstone property, and they will pick it up from there and build the rest of the line to tie it and make that loop. There's a list of our contractors. Like I said, I was impressed we got that many contractors to bid on our project. Uh, we're recommending that we approve the resolution authorizing award of the contract with Atlas Construction Corporation out of Granite Shores, Texas, for an amount not to exceed $1,605,925.31. That includes a 5% contingency.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Councilor Zuniga.
Hi, Leon, thank you for answering the, the questions I emailed you. Is this the Arwa water supply that's coming there first into this loop?
No, sir, no, council member, the Arwa line will be coming in on County Road 158, where we're gonna build the new, uh, ground storage and elevated storage, so it'll be coming in. That's where our take point will be for the Arwa water there.
So what water will be in this loop, um, once it's built? City water?
It's, it's city water. We also have a GBR take plate, take point right there at that, uh, protector site, so it'll be GBA water primarily, primarily from that area.
And the loop, does it just help with, um, um, variety of, of being able to get it to different parts of, um, Waterstone?
It creates redundancy for us, not only in Waterstone, but also in the, uh, Meritage project that's going on, plus any future projects that we have out there. Even Quell Ridge will benefit from this particular water line, be, being able to make sure that we have enough water to provide and keep a loop system in there active. As you know, we have several areas of town where we don't have a loop system, but this one was intentionally planned to make sure that is looped.
Thank you, Leon.
You're welcome.
That's what I was answering to questions.
Any further questions, comments? Motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14.
Motion by Councilor Floris Cale, seconded by Councilor Parsley. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero, six to zero, sorry, I'm gonna call that one. Forgot about Ashley. All right, next up is Agenda Item, uh, number 15, second reading, in ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, in accordance with Chapter 47, uh, installation and erection of no parking signs prohibited, uh, along Arbor Knot Drive, uh, et cetera. This item is on second reading. Mr. Barba.
Mayor and Council, I was given direction to visit with the school district about this particular project, and, uh, I did get a chance to talk to Jerry Scrocky, she's our safety director, and we talked about the time changes, we talked about, should we have parking on both sides, should we have, uh, uh, should we reduce the limits of the no parking area? Jerry, uh, provided the information as far as the closures. She did limit it to an hour and a half in the morning and an hour and a half in the afternoon, so the rest of the time, it's available for the public to park there if they choose to do so. And we do want to keep parking, no parking on both sides for that area, and, uh, we wanted to keep the limits of 460 feet, uh, the same as, uh, we had before. So that's why the ordinance reads, but council can make recommendations or changes if you choose to do so.
I have a question, Leon, the, uh, no parking signs will have the times, but it, will it say during regular school hours? Like, in other words, if it's a holiday or there's no school or summer, then obviously that rule will no longer make any sense. So it's, it only makes sense during times when school's letting out.
I thoroughly agree with that. We'll have it Monday through Friday, but there will be holidays. Uh, we're pushing it kind of close to have a lot of information on that sign, so we'll look at that, though. We'll see if that can be done.
Okay.
Except holidays, maybe that'll cover that, something like that.
Or, yeah, during school, during regular school days, or something along those lines.
Good point, yes, sir, I will do that.
Uh, Councilor Tobias, Mayor Protem.
Real quick, um, since this will probably be like the second kind of no sign parking for, in the referencing schools in the area, uh, we're either looking at making it universal as far as the way the signs read, and if we're gonna, like, say, I'm looking at South Lake Ranch, I know it's a little bit different situation over there, but if, uh, I'm, I'm just trying to look at being more uniformed across the city when it comes to these signs, because I think over there, it says no parking signs, um, September through May. Okay, so that shuts the entire thing down, where something similar to this, we're giving specific hours. I wonder if it's something that we need to continue to look to? I know this has been brought up before, chief, should we just stick to what we've got? Because this is, this is all proactive, okay? Uh, I, I agree with all this, that we need to be able to look at the public safety matter, but if we start hearing residents saying, okay, in my neighborhood, why can I not park here September through May, but in this street's over here by Tobias, or if we go to another district on West Side, how come they only have it for like a certain amount of hours a day, and only on school hours?
Uh, good evening, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. Mayor Protem, you're exactly right. If we're trying to address the same type of complaint or the same type of concern, which is school-based parking issues in local residential communities, consistency would be best. There's a lot of words that we're talking about putting on these signs, which would be a little bit challenging on the space. And then if we leave something undefined, uh, like if we just say during school or not school, some of your visitors and folks to the neighborhood who are not involved in the school district with children may or may not know when school is or is not in session. So it may be challenging for a motorist who's not familiar with the school schedule to know when that would apply to them, so.
Yeah.
I believe what you're saying is consistency is exactly gonna be the best thing.
I've already had residents in South Lake getting, um, tickets, and it's in front of their house.
Correct, it does apply to all motorists. And I remember years ago when council took this item up as a point of discussion, and they did discuss the possibility of issuing parking permits and all kinds of options. They opted not to allow that because of the complexity of borrowed vehicles, guests, changing vehicles, the registration process. And when they passed it, they did mean for it to apply to all motorists, including the residents in the community, and they were very specific and direct about that at that time.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Right, well, maybe we can address it when the time comes, but as far as this, I, I do support this measure right here.
Councilor Floris Cale.
Thank you. Uh, I am really nervous to implement this, but I, I've sent my emails, we've had the discussion that I know the city has gone above and beyond to make sure that we have reached out to the schools. I drove by there today, and I was thinking, all these people are gonna be so upset come when you put those signs up.
Yep.
And I understand it, um, it's a slippery slope, because I don't know where they're gonna park, and I don't know how that's gonna affect, you know, traffic on 150, but I feel like we've done as much due diligence as we can do as a city. Nothing short of putting a sign up here saying like, hey, this is gonna be no parking, so. With that, I'd like to approve Agenda Item Number 15.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Floris Cale, seconded by Councilor Zuniga, that we approve Agenda Item 15. Is there discussion on that motion? Uh, your point's well taken, because I think it's been my experience that whenever you make changes with parking, uh, you're trying to solve a problem for one person and creating it for someone else. So, um, that's what's gonna happen here. We've gone back and forth on Arbor Knot before, we've gone back and forth in, uh, like you say, in Kensington Trails, South Lake Ranch, various other places, Plum Creek. The, what we've always done in Plum Creek is we've actually just went to no parking, just period. Paint it red, make it no parking, and, and go from there. But I, I can understand the desire to allow people to park there all the rest of the times, except when it's a problem. But it's gonna ultimately come down to chief and whether or not they are gonna try to go enforce that. You know, go sweep, sweep the streets before school seems like an interesting use of police resources, I don't know, but, uh, I understand the desire, and I guess we'll just see what happens. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. Next up is Agenda Item Number 16. Uh, 16 and 17 are both being requested to be postponed, so there'll be 16 and 17. Did I do that right? Yep.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm just gonna, uh, go through these, and we're gonna make a motion to postpone to the next regularly scheduled meeting. First reading, in ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, uh, annexing approximately 37.99 acres of land at 301 BB Road. Uh, this item has a public hearing, which was left open at the last meeting. If there are no objections, I'm gonna open that public hearing again. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone this item until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Floris Cale. Is there discussion on that motion? Mr. Atkinson.
Yes, sir, Will Atkinson, for the record, uh, I would ask that y'all please postpone it till the 10/24 meeting.
That's, what 10/24 meeting?
October 24.
There's gonna be a special called meeting on the 10, on 10/24.
All right, well, we'll put it to the next regular meeting, and at that time, if we wanna push it to the 24th, then, then we can.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item 17, postponed on the 5th, an ordinance amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning approximately 101 acres to a planned unit development, including 72 acres retail, uh, 29 acres multifamily for property load at, K at 301 BB Road. Uh, this item has a public hearing that was left open at the last meeting. If there are no objections, I'm gonna open that public hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone this agenda item until the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Floris Cale. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up's Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, um, P and Z had postponed their consideration until, um, 10/18.
That's fine.
Which is the Wednesday, so just, just so y'all are aware.
Okay, sounds great. Next up is Agenda Item Number 18. Consider possible action to direct city manager and staff to work on a sidewalk priority plan, metrics, and ranking system based on pedestrian mobility throughout the city. Councilor Zuniga.
Oh, thank you, Mayor and Council. This agenda item was just brought because, uh, residents had reached out about, um, not having some sidewalks. And I believe, uh, we already have something that we're working on, uh, but I just wanted to get clarification on that, um, because of, since I've sat here on the council, I've, um, kind, well, I've sort of got the impression that the sidewalk plan is, um, is disorganized and kind of random. I find myself asking over and over, um, will there be sidewalks here? And then we find out that there, that there won't be, or that they're, or that they don't fit. So some questions I'd like to know, if we do build up a sidewalk strategy plan, is, um, how many miles of sidewalks do we intend to build and repair, like every year, so that we can keep up with, um, sidewalks that are in need of repair? Um, can we also look at getting sidewalks on at least one side of the street? I, I know cost is a big factor, but maybe for those streets that have nothing, um, we could look at one side of the street and then sort of build a priority of where the, the, the need is for sidewalks? These are kind of the things I'd like to see, um, like we do with roads, uh, so we have more information, um, because I think that it's, it's disheartening to hear that a, a road is built, the sidewalks aren't there, they're not there, because you have to have a year to look at, uh, whether there'll be drainage issues, whether there'll be easements. So, um, I, I just wanna help, um, create a strategy that, um, will take all of this into account. Those were, those were my thoughts on that. Do we have a sidewalk plan? Have we ever had a sidewalk plan in our development codes? That's just an open question, Brian?
Yeah, I, I don't, um, I don't know if we have a sidewalk plan. Typically, those are components of the mobility plans that you would look at, and you could do an analysis to, uh, see where there's a lack of connectivity. Uh, you really try to prioritize areas typically around schools. Uh, we could do an analysis like that if the council would like us to do that. Most likely, we'd probably want to use an outside consultant to help us pull that together. Uh, just don't have the staff resources to do that, but you do need to assess the quality of the sidewalks. Uh, just don't have the staff resources to do that. But you need to assess the quality of the sidewalks and then prepare all the other information and bring forward a prioritized, prioritized plan.
So who builds up the sidewalks in the city? Is it the development that comes in or is the city set aside budget money for sidewalks?
Typically, when a new development comes in, they're required to build sidewalks, but there may be, that may be just their property. And so it may not have connections to other sidewalk segments in this, in the community because there may be parcels of land that haven't developed that are next to it or in between other connections. It just depends.
Can I ask a question? So if we have public roads, do we, we do have established that public roads should have sidewalks, correct? If we were to build new roads, they will have sidewalks? Just not the ones that we currently have that don't have a sidewalk?
Well, I, I think it depends, right? So some of the roads that we had talked about, which I think, uh, Councilmember Zuniga is referring to is Goforth and Haydenryke, uh, we were looking at reconstructing those roadways. And what we're trying to be very clear about with the council is we had funds to reconstruct the existing pavement. But to change that and add sidewalks would be a much different project, which would require drainage, culverts, uh, all kinds of, of work, potentially land acquisition to put in the right of way necessary in the improvements. So that's a different question than just where are sidewalks and where should they be? That's a capital improvement program of, of putting that together, if I'm understanding where you're trying to go with the item.
Can I ask? I don't know if, um, if you were done, Councilmember Zuniga. So, um, will we need to do some sort of study to see what the need is for a sidewalk and roads that are like this long, like Haydenryke, Goforth? Like, how do we get to know if the residents are indeed in need of a sidewalk becau- because of mobility? Or that those are roads that are mainly being used for transportation, like for vehicle transportation? Cause I don't see, I understand the importance of having walkability, but if we have such a long road that is really not being walked by anyone or will be, then how do, how do we determine that, you know?
Miguel, is, is your main priority here to, um, to address a lack of sidewalks around schools?
Around schools is what really bothers me. When I see that kids are riding bikes, walking home and they could get hit by a vehicle and we just, that's where the dense, that's where the denser areas are and the more mobility is needed. So that's where I would like to see more sidewalks built. And then when I look at some of the older developments, their back fences are already budding up against the road. So it's like, well, doesn't look like we can fix this, but where are we looking at? Where can we make improvements in this city so that some of these pedestrians can walk safely? And these are around, um, Wallace Middle School. I remember last year you brought up, right? Um, Veterans Drive needing sidewalks. Layman, you know, there, there's areas out there and I'm sure I can continue the list. So why we don't have a plan and it seems very random that where yes, council members are asking for sidewalks, um, over here, over there. And it doesn't seem strategic.
But I don't know that we have asked specifically for a sidewalk because that will be something we will have to bring up in the budget for us to analyze. So there might be opportunity for us next year. But also since you're talking about school, can we partner up with the school district to get this sidewalks on? Because it's, you know, children going to the school that are in need of this.
So just one thing on that, and I only learned this recently, is if there are sidewalks, new, the creation of new sidewalks, I think it's within two miles of a school, they lose bus service. So that's a major issue.
We did it. We, we built, we used, so the state gives out grants for certain sidewalks in certain locations. And we applied for a grant to build a sidewalk along 2770 in front of Plum Creek, basically from the Walgreens up to the school, because people were complaining about, uh, kids walking to school along 2770 in the ditch. And so this, we applied for a grant and I think it was a 75, 25 match, something along those lines where the state paid for the, uh, majority of it. But it was really tight from a budgeting standpoint and they, they made it a very small sidewalk. I think it's barely ADA compliant and it, it sort of goes into some of the culverts, just barely where you have to walk right up next to the road. Was how it got funded and constructed. Uh, it took three years to build it and as soon as it was completed, all of Plum Creek lost bus service to, uh, Barton and Hayes High and Negley. Well, not Negley, I guess, but to Barton. Uh, and so the amount of people who came out in protest, it's like, well, hang on. So it's a catch 22. The state is like, yeah, we'll give you the money because the state is the one who funds the bus system through property taxes, but they control all of that. And so you do have to be very careful. So that's the first thing. The second thing is we have done a sidewalk study. It was in 2016, 2017. Jerry will probably remember, we actually got the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Commission, uh, to help. We did town halls here. They had a big map, all the sidewalks, where our gaps were. Uh, and it was a fantastic, uh, study and program. It was my first experience with the Kyle area, with kayak. And then after that is when they did the, the analysis for a skate park. So I think it'd be good to have them to, to look at what they did back in 2016, 2017 to study. Cause you're right, connecting is just what Brian said. Uh, and then the third thing is you have to be careful because sometimes you will make requirements for people to build sidewalks when they do development projects and they will because they have to. And then low and behold, it's a connection from nowhere to nowhere. Uh, and then a new project will come in, which will make the sidewalk obsolete. And I can say that from experience because in 2014, I built on I-35 and was required to put in a sidewalk, even though there wasn't a sidewalk for a half a mile that direction or that direction on the front of my property. I had to build a six-foot sidewalk and had to incorporate into my site plan in order to get approval from the city. And I asked, what are your plans to make this connection? Cause I would happily do it. Or how about, and I begged the city, how about, uh, I won't put it in now, but as soon as the one person connects, so that it can be useful, I will pledge to build it then. And it was, nope, you must build it. Uh, and then two years ago, Tech Dot came through and built a sidewalk from one end to the other on I-35, right in front of the sidewalk that I just built in there right away. So I had a sidewalk that I constructed from nowhere to nowhere into all eternity. And so it's one of those things where it's challenging, but those are all my stories around sidewalks. Uh, and then, uh, the sidewalk repair is another good one. We, we did, and I don't know where Harper is, but we did put together a sidewalk repair schedule so that people could know, they could put in requests for sidewalk repair. And it would go online and you could see where you were at in the pecking order because initially we did, we had no money or resources to do sidewalk repairs. What we said was if you have a sidewalk in your subdivision, that's the responsibility of the homeowner, which it is by charter and by state law, which is why we do not have liability if someone slips on a sidewalk, even though it's in the public right of way. Uh, but we have, we decided that, uh, while not, I mean, while not, um, making a, uh, any statements about our liability and still saying that it is the liability of the homeowner, HOA, or what, what have you, that the city would start, uh, we would contract and we con, we contracted with the company that did maintenance. Uh, they did this like lift and fill where they would put the foam stuff in to help level out. And we did that for a few years and repaired a lot of sidewalks. Uh, and then we actually have a standing lineup. Now we have a standing line item for our own staff to go in and repair and they're, I haven't heard from them in a couple of years. So your question's appropriate. But it's, so it's just been a couple of years since, uh, I've gotten any update on how that's progressing. But it used to be an online thing. So you could actually go online and see exactly where the sidewalk repair crew is. So do we have, do we know if this, that sidewalk repair crew is still out there and?
I, I do not know. I, I'd be happy to, or just Amber, do you know?
Amber, do you have, you know?
Amber Schmeizer, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Yes, we are currently, um, still maintaining the sidewalks. Right now it's, um, on a report, the, um, issue, and then we go out and fix it.
Do you know if it's still online, the way that it used to be?
I'm not sure if it's still online and up, but we are actively repairing sidewalks throughout the community.
Well, I remember, uh, there was a time when we got complaints about the condition of sidewalks. It seemed like weekly. And so we'd been pursuing sidewalk repairs for years now and the amount of sidewalk complaints have gone down in terms of like this, you know, unevenness or heaving that, that was complaints have gone down. It's not to say that they don't still exist, but I would love to have maybe an emailed report of just, you know, how much sidewalk we've been repairing. And then if we're no longer publishing the schedule, why? And if there's not a good reason, can we restart that so that there, there's a online place where you can go and request your sidewalk to be repaired? And then there's also an online place where you can go and see where you are in the schedule. You know, I don't know, it's not necessarily specific to a specific address. Maybe it's a neighborhood or a, a street, uh, something along those lines where you can, you can know like, all right, my sidewalk has issues, but the city has it scheduled for four months from now, they're going to be coming down our street and making those repairs.
If Floris Kael.
Councillor Floris Kael.
Yeah, they'll be next.
All right. Let me wake up. All right. So, um, there's two things I want to address in this conversation that we had. The first one is going to be the resistance due to school funds, um, from the state. So those funds, even though they are nice to have, I think they're, they're, they're not a requirement. It's not like we're not going to get funds and therefore we can't build sidewalks. I think maybe if the state and the school work together, that, um, we can figure out a way to pay for the buses in an alternative way instead of not getting funding, um, because I don't think it's a good idea. We can only say no to these sidewalks because of schools for so long, but school's only in session for a certain amount of time a year. Sidewalks are imperative for safety of not just our residents, but our, our children. I live off of 150 and regardless if there's sidewalks there or not, people walk down 150 every single day. And they're young kids and their kids work, walk into work and their kids walk into school. Councilmember Zuniga has seen that. And so I think a good conversation between the school and the city is going to be required in order to figure out uh, how we can fix this problem, which I think is, is a problem. I think the lack of sidewalks in the older developments is, is a safety issue. Um, and for the reasons you stated, you said, um, there was a, a sidewalk that went to nowhere. Well, if we have a plan, if the city creates a plan, then maybe that won't happen. So it's getting in front of it and seeing where we want these sidewalks, even though there's no development, like where do we want these? Maybe if the, um, developer builds their sidewalk, the city can continue after that. So it's not leaving a half sidewalk because eventually I think it's important to have a full build out. Um, and I will say it's unfortunate that Tech Dot came and built and you had to pay for yours, but that's part of business, right? And so I don't want to slow down development for the sake of, uh, Tech Dot coming in here. Because, uh, I think Tech Dot is Veterans Drive and, um, 150 going down. It's all 150. And so those are for me, some of the scariest places because that's where our kids walk. 150 leads to Wallace Middle School and, um, there's a lot of kids going back and forth. Overall, I think it's still a good idea to make a plan. I think it's, it's good to be prepared. I don't know what that looks like, if we have to wait until, um, next, next budget. That would not necessarily be my hope. I do wish this was brought up before because I think it's important. I think, um, as much as I like having new things, I think it's also important to fix up our old things. And so the older subdivisions that don't have the parks, that don't have sidewalks, that don't have the nice amenities that the new developments have, I think it's important to put a focus on that so we can, uh, bring equality throughout all of Kyle. So my, my suggestion would be somehow figure out how we can do a plan in order to move forward. Maybe not this year to actually build them, but a plan to engineer sidewalks and to get a good idea of where they should be within the city of Kyle.
All right. Well, I'm sorry. Can I clarify a couple of things that she just said? So, um, when I was speaking, a couple of things that I said, I, I guess maybe you are listening because you're nodding off or something. But number one is on 2770, we built using a grant, which is also a state road, uh, a sidewalk. But the state's grant that they gave limited the, the type of sidewalk that we can build and we severely under-engineered it. So the lesson I'm trying to say is if you want to build sidewalks on 150, build it the right way. That's the lesson there. Uh, so make it far better than what's on the West Side. That's the lesson. Not, not equal to the West, but better than the West. Uh, the second thing is that there are situations where sidewalks get constructed and then a pla, a plan comes in place that overtakes that and makes for bad development practices. So we need to make sure that as we're rolling out any kind of plan for a sidewalk, that, that we're, we are, we are confident in the plan long-term, that we're not, not thinking about something. So that we are making requirements or making expenses either on the private side or on the public side to do something when we're not thinking through what the long-term plan for a particular corridor is, or taking into consideration all the different partnerships that we have, both with the state, with the county and with the school district. Those are the points. Councillor, Mayor Protem.
Okay. Uh, I know we can go on about should, could have, would have. I'm all about finding solutions. Okay. Here's an idea. Why don't we look at, if we could, uh, look at developing a plan, uh, such as, like I've mentioned many times before, dividing the city into regions or just to areas. Uh, we can utilize the District Two, District Four, District Six. We can utilize exactly what you say, like what, uh, you're asking for is do we have a projects website tool that we can go to where the residents themselves can help us? Because we could go out ourselves and say, I want that sidewalk fixed. I want this one fixed. No, I want one over here. Well, we need one over here. We can utilize our residents to come to us and say, over here on, um, Amberwood Drive by this, uh, I have a street light that's out. And they can go in and put a work order in. And that work order could be assigned a number and so forth. And the same thing with the sidewalks. If we have a sidewalk repair, because obviously the, it's, you know, a lot of them are deteriorating. We can look at it that way. That, that right there builds your metric system. That also builds your priority plan because you could see which one needs it the most. Because like over there by Science Hall where we had that incident with the, where it was cracking, but we were able to make a, a, a minor repair, which has helped. And then we can also use the ranking system, what Zuniga is asking for. So you've got all three of those right there. And we're also allowing our residents, them to come to us and say, hey, these are, these are some of the sidewalks that are broken up. Okay. These are the ones that, uh, that, that are cracking. Could you guys look into this? It makes all three of those the priority. And we can go back and budget and we can have our sidewalk crew come in and look at those and say, hey, we, it's not just a major repair. We got to do a full reconstruction. And then while you're doing that, you can also get your budget in there to see how much it's going to cost. We can get the cost analysis from there. We can also want to break it down even more. I know some of us here on council want dollar per dollar, hour per hour. How mu, how long is it going to take for these individuals to repair them? So you're breaking everything down, but you're also involving the residents to help you with that.
But Mayor Protem, they, that's what I was saying at the beginning is we have a priority.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know, this item was sponsored. Did you ask Harper what the priority plan for sidewalks is? They score them. They have an online system. There's just all kinds of history. We actually have a sidewalk study that we did back in 2016, 2017. I don't know the updates on any of those things, but Harper's not even here.
I didn't, I didn't get that information from staff.
Okay. Well, that would be, that's where I would go next is to request that information. And also how do they prioritize? Cause they absolutely have a priority system based on resident feedback, because the residents are the ones that make the requests. So what you're saying is what we do.
Exactly.
Uh, but I don't know. I, like I'm saying, I haven't heard from it in a while because the amount of complaints on sidewalks have, have been reduced by 90% since the time that we were really focused on this particular issue. So I would like to know where all of that stands, but we just can't get that information now because this is just.
Yeah, exactly. But it's just, it's just, just going, I'm just going by what his agenda is requesting about having staff work on a priority plan for metrics and ranking system. If something's already established, then let's just continue that and improve it. And then that way we could also have the, and then we could build from, from that end.
Yeah. So, yeah. So the one thing I did like, and when I was doing research on it, there's walk audits. So they actually audit out there, um, the condition, see if it needs repairs. That, that's really what I was looking for is can we do a better, well, can we look around and see where are they needed? Like you said, what can we do so that we've got better information to, to say, okay, it could be useful and improve the walkability around here and it's not random.
Mayor and council, if, if the, um, if the request is for us to, to go back and look at some of these historical documents that we have, provide you with updates of where we are with that process and then give you an update of where that is. And then any potential recommendations that we have of how to augment that plan going forward, we can certainly bring that back. And this is a council initiated item, so I don't have that report for you. But I can bring it back certainly with options and, and, uh, an implementation plan of how we could do it.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
That's what I was going to say, and I think also the fact that we are having a vibe plan makes it easier on the sidewalk, you know, situations, since that is being done for connectivity and walkability. So I wonder if that's why the sidewalk plan kind of went to sleep. But do you need a motion from us for you to try to look that back, to bring back what was done before, and for, you know, for staff to review if we need to revisit?
Sure, I think that'd be fine, if that's, if you want to have a motion with that, we can certainly bring that back for you.
Yes, so, let me see if I can get this. So make a motion to direct city manager and staff to go back, revisit what we had, so that we can look at sidewalk priority, metrics, ranking system, conduct some sidewalk audits for repairs, so we can get feedback on how to build better connectivity and walkability throughout the city.
Alright, motion's made by Councilor Zuniga, seconded by Councilman Floris Cale. Is there discussion on the motion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item 19, Consider Possible Action to Direct City Manager and Staff to Implement a Speed Study on Opal Road to Address Traffic Concerns. Councilman Zuniga and Floris Cale.
So, yes, this agenda item I brought up because there were some concerns of heavy traffic on Opal Road. I'd like to ask Mr. Miller to speak first for about two minutes, give us what it is that he would like to see, and then I'd like to make my analysis as well.
Okay, thank you for inviting me. Tim Miller, I'm a homeowner and certified organic grower on Opal Lane. My concern is the continuous operation of the heavy-duty semi-trucks that come through on Opal today. Another one was speeding with 20 semi-trucks that came through, that I reported for traffic complaints. That is going with the subdivision right around the corner. I've asked for speed bumps now for two years, just to slow the traffic down. Why those vehicles are actually even going on Opal, I don't know, because it is a weight-restricted street, rate-restricted lane, even, is it even an acknowledged designated lane in itself? I've asked that before. I'm not going to look into that matter, it's your problem. It's the subdivisions that are coming in on, that are coming in on Opal and the semi-trucks, and coming in on Sledge and Opal, that new subdivision, I don't know what the name is, that's getting to be really close to now cement trucks. And the last time Paramount sent all their cement trucks, that was a fiasco. I'm looking at 3,000 cement trucks coming past our house. Today, over the weekend, I was looking at the crack that just formed on Opal in front of our house. That's why I stand out in front of the road, slowing these trucks down, alright? They have disintegrated the road further on down past the Hargraves subdivision, that road is a mess down there. And the only reason it's not broken up is because I'm standing and slowing down those semi-trucks. And if it thinks, you know, takes courage to come out and do that in front of a cement truck going 50, 60 miles an hour, you do it. I'm not stopping, I have nowhere to run, I can't leave. So, you know, speed bumps, you know, I've turned in for when Tech Dot and the city comprehension plan many years ago, roundabouts at Sledge and Opal, Sledge and Scott, and Sledge at Stagecoach. Those were listed as what could be done. That way, that will prevent that. Putting a barricade out to prevent the semi-trucks, they don't give, sorry, alright, they will just keep on coming. Putting out some type of barricade to prevent semi-trucks, well then, or any of the semis, then you have fire truck problems. Because how are they going to get around a barricade like that? So that's mine. Speed bumps, the simplest, they're not going to like it, I don't care. Alright, why are they even coming down Opal? Why are they even coming down Opal? It's not even, is it a city street?
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your.
Alright, so, like, so, just one further point, a speed study, putting out the lines on the roads, air traffic count, when you do that, as soon as the train horns come down, then the traffic will come past us even more, because Paramount will start selling all of their houses and apartment complexes in there. So we're going to get more vehicle traffic on Opal over the coming years. And you have to remember, I did give the city a plan, what you could do, a number of years ago.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Miller, councilman mayor. So as you've heard, Mr. Mayor, he's a, Mr. Miller, he's a concerned resident, and so I brought this agenda item up, because of the concerns of heavyweight trucks speeding on Opal Lane, of course, in other neighborhoods throughout the city of Kyle as well. So I'm requesting an updated speed study on Opal to get a true baseline for determining the best course of action to be taken. If this study finds that speed bumps can help reduce violations, then I want to be clear that I do support speed bumps used in the city of Kyle. But that has to be supported through the speed study. I believe councilmember Heiser has more data on this matter, so I'll be yielding the floor over to Councilmember Heiser.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to speak a little bit to Mr. Miller's complaints to the police department, and just some of the, just a number or two that have resulted from those complaints. KPD's responded over 50 times in the last two years to Mr. Miller after a traffic complaint. And independently from that number, 21 traffic stops have taken place in the vicinity of Mr. Miller's property from the years 20 to 2023. So almost a three-year span, there's only been 21 traffic stops. You know, Mr. Miller, I don't want you to think that. And we've responded over 50 times, our police department, and every time that you call and we do take, when we take those concerns seriously, and KPD sends out an officer, what we're doing, or what chief and his team are doing, are redirecting an officer away from areas that prevent, that provide, that are much more, or much bigger areas for safety concerns and traffic hazards, and citations that are written. So while I do hear you, as many times as you've emailed and spoken, I hear you, and we're taking you seriously, you have to try to look at the big picture of this, and there's only so much that we can do. We have a police department that is not, that's still is short officers, and is still trying to hire to catch up to what the average number we should have per resident. And every time, we can't keep an officer policing that street 24 hours a day. And it seems like sometimes that's what is being asked, based on the words that you choose to use when you reach out to council and staff. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to work with Chief Barnett and the police department to conduct a two-week traffic study, two-gauge speed and direction.
Second.
Alright, motion by Councilor Zuniga, seconded by, I'm sorry, motion by Councilmember Heiser, seconded by Councilman Zuniga, that we direct staff to do a two-week speed study on Opal Lane near Mr. Miller's property. Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Pro Tim?
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Floris Cale, you go first, and I'll finish up, please.
My concern is, I was co-sponsoring this item, and so I just, before a motion was made, I wanted to get an opportunity to speak, because I think there's two issues here. There's a speeding issue and a safety issue. And the speeding issue is the cause of the safety issue, which may not be that big of a deal now, because there's not a lot of homes on that road, but as soon as Paramount starts to sell those homes, then you're going to have an issue with all those houses, and the cars, and the kids, and the people that are over there in the future. I don't know what that looks like. I'm not sure if those homes have already been sold, or if they're occupied at all, but I would imagine, within the next year or two, you're going to see an increase of traffic in that area, increase of people maybe trying to walk, because I know in that area, there's high walkability, like, everybody loves to get out and walk, and ride their bikes. So for me, it's not just about speeding, it's about safety and road maintenance. And I completely understand that we're going to go through a growth spurt, that this is going to happen for the next five years. I understand that this is going to be a struggle, but the answer to me is not just, well, you know, we wait until the growth is done. I am grateful that Councilmember Heiser did make a motion. My hope is he can also include safety issues, in addition to the speeding issues, and maybe some road maintenance involved with that, too, to figure out, because if you're talking about impact fees, I think this should be a huge area where we focus on impact fees, because that area needs to be fixed up yesterday. So, and I do have a concern that it's only going to get worse as these homes start to fill up.
Well, just speaking to the motion that was made.
Hang on, I'm going to go, everybody had their hand up, so before anyone goes twice, Mayor Pro Tim?
Okay, thank you. Right off the bat from the beginning, has anybody reached out to the developers, right off the bat, about their trucks that come up and down, and about the speed? Has anybody even reached out to the actual construction companies and addressed it from ground-zero level about the speed that's going through on that end?
Mayor and council, Jeff Barnett, Chief Police. I don't think, other than the traffic enforcement efforts where they've made stops, and stopped to the actual, or spoken to the actual truck drivers that were in violation, I don't think we've tried to reach out to specific companies that are delivering dirt to any of the particular properties, no sir.
Okay. And then I guess the other question would be is, I understand where we're going, Mr. Miller, my family lives right behind you, we've lived there for over 45 years, okay? I understand the frustration, because they see it all the time, too. It's inevitable, it's coming, there's nothing we can do about it. I know it's, I'm all about progress, but not in my neighborhood, okay? I get it. But as I told them, what other roads are they going to go down? They've got to construct that. There's going to be trucks that are going to need to get through there, there's only one way in and one way out. Yes, you could get crossed at the crossing guard, but then there's other trucks and other things that are going to be coming, needs to come in through the city, and unfortunately, yes, they are going to have to go in front of Roland Lane and in front of your house, okay? The speed, I can understand. I can understand if they're going about 45, 50 miles an hour on that road, because they see an open road and they take off. They don't see any enforcement and so forth. I get it. I understand, and like Councilmember Bearheiser and Ms. Floris Cale, it's a safety issue, we hear you on that, trust me, we do. I've been here a lot longer to understand that these are all farm roads, and we have people just speeding up and down. But at the same time, it is going to unfortunately get even more heavier on that traffic area, and we have to start preparing for that. And we're trying to take proactive measures. Getting the speed study done, we'll probably kind of see where we're at on that end. But just know, Mr. Miller, we are doing all we can, and I hear you as well, as a longtime resident. I'm as frustrated as much, and Ms. Floris Cale even heard me yell at some car that was speeding out there, she heard me say, slow down, Mercedes! Because, again, this is, yeah, I yelled it out loud, because I get it, I understand where you're coming from. But at the same time, it's inevitable, we just got to prepare ourselves, but we as a city are going to continue to do our best to make sure that we make sure it's safe for everybody.
Councilman Parsley.
Thank you. So we have, just to make sure, we have never done a traffic study on this road? We just have?
No, we have.
We have?
We did do a speed study back in 2020.
Okay.
And I'll let the chief talk about the results of that, I know you have the.
Yeah, I'll see if I can go off my memory here. I think over that roughly 14-day period, I think we tracked about 1,600 cars. Out of those 1,600 cars, I think if you add them up, there were about 170 that were probably susceptible to a traffic stop that were speeding. And that was 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when we ran that. Those were kind of the numbers that we got.
And so my second question is, how often do we tend to do traffic studies on the same road currently? I don't know if that would be for Mr. Barbara?
No, I think I can.
Like, we repeat a traffic study on the same road? It's been three years?
Yeah, we're okay doing it, the PD, we're fine doing it. I think there have been, over the years, several repeats where we go out and do a study, and it didn't quite yield what maybe the citizen thought the numbers would look like. And then they would ask us again a year or two later, just to see if there's been any change in the traffic pattern. Also, we've tried to do those differently between summer and school, because in some neighborhoods, if school is in session, it tremendously impacts certain roadways and the vehicle count, so we'll come back in the summer and do another count. I think it's due, we might as well, as quickly as we can, do exactly as requested, get another study, and get you a vehicle count, direction, speed, and let's just see what the numbers show us. We agree, we try to enforce it every chance we get. As mentioned earlier, staffing is limited, so, and we get a lot of requests to be all over the community for traffic enforcement. We really do try to get out to Mr. Miller's. As quoted earlier, we've been out there over 50 times in the last couple of years, add another year on to it, and I think it's getting close to 100 times we've actually been out to his particular area of the street, so.
So just think about the amount of men-hours that we are putting out there just in one place.
And you know, the entire road's not all in the city, so there's just a portion that we're out there trying to look at, to pay attention to his concern and his requests, so.
So we are going to direct staff to get a traffic study, correct? That was part of the motion?
Yes, ma'am, happy to do it.
And I would expect from all council to rely on the information that we're going to be getting, and then go from there. So with that, I'd like to call the question.
Alright, question has been called, non-debatable motion, roll call, vote. Question was called by Councilman Parsley, Councilmember Floris Cale. Roll call vote is a vote to cease debate and take a vote.
Heiser?
Yes.
Tobias?
Aye.
Parsley?
Aye.
Floris Cale?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Alright.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Sorry. Alright, question has been called unanimously, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Motion to adjourn.
Second.